With them. So, we've been involved with some of the recent hearings and meetings on the legacy of uranium mines on the Navajo Nation. So, one of them goes back to the uranium legislation that was tried, that was put before the council a couple of years ago, and they were looking at how to get involved with the uranium activities. And earlier this year, we did, we were part of some agencies back on February fifteenth, where RDC did an AUM work session to get updates from the federal government, US EPA, Navo EPA, Department of Energy, their UMTRA program, and also the DRUM program. And we, Navo AML, we also gave an update on our uranium reclamation activities. So, part of what we requested from RDC during our update was that we get, we'd be given the opportunity to show what kind of reclamation Navo AML has performed on the Navajo Nation. So, subse- subsequently, this Monument Valley site tour was set up. And on April twenty-sixth, we were able to do a site visit to three sites. The first one was what they call the Skyline Mine up on Ol' Jeto Mesa. This site visit, we were able to discuss what kind of reclamation Navo AML did, but we were also able to discuss the partnership that we were able to develop with US EPA to further stabilize some, uh, separate disposal cell up on top of the mesa. The second site we went to was the Moonlight Mine, which was a large open pit mine. And to be actually on the ground and walk the area, we showed that we walked through an o- open pit that was six hundred feet wide, eight hundred feet in length, and a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. So, we had a lot of discussions there about what would be remaining that comes up under what CIRCLA is talking about remediation. The last, last project we visited was the Monument Number Two project, where we showed how we were able to address the physical hazards and some of the mine waste, but it also demonstrated that there's a lot more work that needs to be done under the CIRCLA authority in terms of remediation. We all were able to see all the mine wastes that were still within the canyons, but also how it can impact the local community, which was just to the east of where we had visited. So, as part of the request from RDC was to give recommendations on what further can be done in terms of the uranium issues on the Navajo Nation. So, again, we, Navo AML is basically looking from the outside, providing assistance to the initiatives that are being done under the abandoned uranium mine initiatives. So, some of the, the report that was submitted on dated June second is talking about some recommendations. And to not go in full detail on everything here, one of the main concerns was the actual law of CIRCLA. We have a Navo CIRCLA, Navajo Nation CIRCLA, and the US CIRCLA. But in terms of the process, it's a lengthy process, and one of the initiatives should be, how do we expedite this process? The second one is cleanup. What is cleanup? There's no in, in mind when we're talking about cleanup. So, there's got to be further discussions and who's all going to be involved with it. We, we actually discussed maybe scheduling an AUM conference to get ideas from the outside coming in. The third bullet is settlement agreements. There's settlement agreements out there such as the Tronik Settlement, which is a nine hundred and seventy-five million dollar agreement with the former Kermit Gee Mines. But is this really leading to any cleanup yet, yet? And one of the things with the settlements we had discussed was, there's a lot of interest that's being accumulated on, under them. Can these be modified so that interest is actually going to benefit the Navajo Nation in what we were talking about, their capacity building? The fourth bul- bullet was the Navajo Nation Plan. The Navajo Nation needs to get all stakeholders involved. That's OPVP, the council, RDC, DNR, Navo EPA, so that we can discuss a path forward in expediting some of these cleanup within the numerous areas. Capacity building, part of it was, how do we keep Navajo Nation staff working for the Navajo Nation? One of the comments we made was that once we train them, they have a tendency to leave. That comes back to the federal government or other local areas consultants having a higher pay scale than what the Navajo Nation does. So, is that something that we can change? The Navajo Nation government support was getting everybody involved, and this sort of leads back to RDC's request to have field hearings from the US government on the Navajo Nation. Preparation is going to be a big factor once these hearings come up, so that we can give a Navajo Nation stance on the AUM activities. Apollo Project. When US EPA gives updates on their ECA process, and they're talking about having designs in public meetings that will be coming up, their next step will actually be getting into cleanup, but that's only a few projects. They mentioned five hundred and twenty AUMs on the Navajo Nation, but at this stage, they're probably only looking at three sites that are ready to go. So, how can we get past the ECA stage so that we're actually doing an underground project? The five federal agencies from the Waxman hearings, five federal agencies were identified to evaluate the impacts on the Navajo Nation and also come up with recommendations. Right now, there's mainly US EPA that's looking at the abandoned uranium mines, Department of Energy's working on the uranium mill tailing sites. In some of our partnership efforts, we've seen that there's resources within these five federal agencies where you can develop networking and training opportunities. So, that's something that as a group, the Navajo needs, Navajo Nation needs to expedite. And part of this capacity building and the memo that was given, Navo AML attached a training program that the Department of Interior uses for some of their staff development. So, that's an opportunity for the Navajo Nation to develop our own training program so that we can educate and do cross-training within our own staff. The last bullet is talking about the technical support that Navo AML has been providing and will continue to provide to the group. And part of what we've always been requesting is we're transparent, and we like to do the show and tell about the project activities. And this leads into the supporting documents. Besides the recommendations, we did submit what we call our mine site visit reports for the RDC tour, but we also included some other mine site visit reports that we had done. One of the big project orientations and education that we did was with the new US EPA Region Nine Regional Administrator, Ms. Martha Guzman. And we were also accompanied by Mr. Carl, Carlton Waterhouse, who is the EPA Director out of Washington DC, and also Chehed Mahud, who was a Director of the Mountain States Plains EPA Program. We also did a Cameron Site Tour with Arizona Congressman O'Hollering, where we gave quick updates on Ca- Cameron activities. And lately, we've also been doing some cross-training and education with the Department of, of Energy, their uranium mill tailings program, and also the defense-related uranium mines. So, all those reports are part of the attachment so that we can show RDC the type of reclamation that has been pu- performed on tribal trust lands from east to west, covering the whole Navajo Nation. And that's a quick recap of the memo, the supporting documents, and Navo AML's background in terms of our oversight, which is the Surface Mining Control Reclamation Act and the Department of Interior. Thank you. So, if there's any questions, we're available.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Daisy, would you like to add anything, sir?
Do, do I say something else, kid?
Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Daniel.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels, second by.
Second motion, Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Um, I can't hear you, Mr. Chair. I don't know, RDC members, could I say something? I don't know, should say. Should say, my good trees, I can't hear you. Um, I don't get that. I don't know, Navajo Nation, AML, I just don't know. Mr. Yazi, I don't know. Uh, Mr. Daisy, I can't hear you. I don't know. So, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. Um, so, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you when we toured, I can't hear you, Monument Valley, the, of Jeto Monument Valley and Kane Valley. I can't hear you, Skyline Mine, I don't know, Moonlight Mine, I don't know, Monument Number Two, that I call. I don't know, we didn't get to Alchea because of the, the time given, uh, it was late when we got done at, um, Kane Valley, VCA, they need to go. Um, I can't hear you moving forward, I can't hear you. I think generally, I can't hear you, I don't know, I can't hear you, um, what has been done at these, uh, sites. I, I can't hear you, I don't know, uh, there still needs to, work needs to be still done at, at these, um, at the, at the sites, I don't know, I can't hear you. I've been not at all, I can't hear you, like, Monument Number Two, what they call, so I, I can't hear you, I can't hear you. Okay, could I, I can't hear you. Could I, transparency, Jim, I can't hear you, Mr. Yazi, the word tran- transparency. I think I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not legal. I can't hear you. The tour, I can't hear you. But the following week, we weren't notified of the visit from the, I can't hear you. I, I wasn't notified. But could I, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. From Navajo Nation EPA, I can't hear you. I don't know, could I, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. US EPA, when they were out here, I can't hear you. Of course, I want to be part of the tour, but, uh, there was no invitation. I don't know, I can't hear you. I, I, I don't know, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I don't know, I can't hear you. I mean, transparency, Jim, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you, RDC, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I, I can't hear you. I, I don't know, I can't hear you. I, I don't know, there was no invitation to RDC and members of the twenty-four council. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Navajo Nation tour, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you, visit from US EPA, I can't hear you, I can't hear you. Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Thank you, Honorable Daniels, for that. Uh, Mr. Daisy, go ahead.
I can't hear you, I can't hear you. Um, I can't hear you, I don't invite you, I can't hear you, on that, um, Regional Administrator, you have done the following week. I can't, um, I can't see, I can't see, abandon uranium mine, I can't see, I can't see, I can't see, Navajo EPA, though, US EPA, Navajo AML Reclamation Department, Division of Natural Resources. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't see, I can't see. I don't know, I can't see, I don't know. Navajo AML, the, um, we are getting funding from the ARPA funding through the, um, Physical Recovery Fund. I can't, we are available anytime to provide whatever tour and orientation that the council needs or the RDC members need, I can't hear you. Over.
I'll tell you, Mr. Daisy.
Yes, sir. Um, there's Melvin.
Uh, Mr. Yazi, go ahead.
If I can make a quick comment. So, one thing I need to stress is that two thousand thirteen, Navo DOJ came out with a ruling that all these AUM sites are under the authority of Navo CIRCLA and US CIRCLA. So, the two lead agencies are US EPA and Navo EPA. We provide assistance upon requests from either one of those entities. So, the communication on the AUM tours or any information we're providing comes through them. So, we are not the lead agency, and yes, we can provide assistance, but we request that Navo EPA is notified, and then it comes down to Navo AML. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yazi. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions? Honorable Gaye, go ahead.
Um, I can't hear you. Um, it, uh, reported, I can't hear you by Mr. Yazi, though, Mr. Daisy. Um, the one thing that, um, we continue to, um, deal with, uh, the, the variety of certain locations, which is in a way okay. I don't, and also, um, what is it that we need to do? I mean, I don't know, I can't hear you. I don't, I don't know, you, you, I can't hear you. Uh, I go, uh, it, I can't hear you. Yes, some may be, uh, by the executive branch, um, uh, decision-making. I can't hear you, I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you across Navajo Nation. And I do appreciate in some areas, you do come out to, um, on, on a different purpose as well. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. Feedback, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, the nation, I can't hear you. And as you know, several years ago, uh, I mean, not several years ago, uh, last year during COVID, uh, could, uh, public hearing, I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I don't, I can't hear you, even uranium commission. I mean, their, their term expired in September, I can't hear you. I don't, different situation. We, 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 we choose to say that, the latest one regarding uranium is that two years extension, I can't hear you. I mean, I can't hear you. But yet, internally, we, we have a bigger situation to resolve uranium issue, a bigger, far more problems we have within our own. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. To some extent, I can't hear you, I can't hear you, house, anything relating to uranium under one roof, I can't hear you. I don't, I don't know, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. It just seems like you're building a big home, but yet, you're just given one nail and I can't hear you. I don't, I can't hear you, I don't know. Now, I can't hear you, I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. Uh, the, the, the reason of the, I don't know, I can't hear you. I go, um, I don't hear programs, it seems sometimes they may not have specific guidance of what needs to be done. I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you, your staff, I can't hear you, I don't know, with limited and no funding is being available out there. I can't hear you. Um, I can't hear you regarding uranium because it, I mean, we don't have a uranium commissioner at, at, currently. And then I don't, uh, next week, uh, Rico, I can't hear you, Council, Washington, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I don't, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. And then even further, I mean, we've been asking for field hearing, uranium field hearing, I can't, um, Navajo Nation, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. Uh, uh, I can't hear you. So, it's easy for the government to dish out funding just to, I don't know, they may look at it therefore defensive of a country, but it's more of being utilized to, uh, kill additional, uh, foreign people overseas, forty billion, I can't hear you. 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 Yeah, we did go out there, I can't hear you. Last one, but still, uh, I can't, I can't hear you. 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 Which is probably true. I can't hear you. So, what, anything that we've done from then until now, what specific have we done? I can't hear you. 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 I can't change, I can't, I can't hear you. 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 On behalf of our Navajo people. So, I can't hear you, Chairman. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. But I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. A lot of times, we really don't, uh, uh, do much follow-up. I, I, we are, we, we were just stretched thin in a way to get things going. We should have used on that as an oversight. Not, not, you're, you're, you're trying to move twenty boxes. You move it up one foot, and then you move up the whole twenty foot, and then you start from the beginning and then move it up for another one foot of all these twenty boxes. I can't hear you. I can't, I can't, I can't hear you. 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 I can't hear you, Chairman, so, but again, I'd like to put it on record again about of these situations that we continue to just, uh, get, uh, provide, uh, a report. So, I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Chairman, and the Honorable, Honorable Gaye.
Hola, uh, Honorable Gaye, you're stacking twenty boxes, you just have to be careful. Make sure one of them, when you're like at five or six boxes, none, none of it comes falling down on you. And when it hits your head, then it gives you a headache, so. I bet, I bet, I understand. That's a good analogy to, to understand what you're saying. I, I can't hear you. So, Mr. Daisy, Mr. Yazi?
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Honorable Gaye and the Honorable Counsel, can I, uh, go ahead and, uh, respond to the question that he asked?
Yes, go ahead.
Did it, um, I can't hear you, Moonlight Mine, I can't hear you. I don't know, mine, I don't know, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. Now, so, they, um, pictures begin to show. Hey, uh, Navajo Abandoned Mine Land Reclamation Department, Division of Natural Resources. I can't, I don't know, I can't hear you. That was at Moonlight Mine. I can't, I can't hear you. Hey, that, that, Navajo Nation Law, CIRCLA, Navajo CIRCLA, yeah, I can't hear you. I don't, I don't, it's a, it's a law that's been signed by the Navajo Nation President, and it's enacted. I can't hear you, I don't know, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, that law. It gives the authority to the Navajo Nation Environmental Protection Agency to...
to develop policies, standards. Ako this, this is so, the ge, this is yinighi. Eh, um, what they call the QOP or the, uh, Navajo Nation Quality Assurance Program Plan. Eh biyado de tonnish. Ah do na na eh biyon sheh stop best law dogi eh, um. You're gonna have policies. You're gonna say, it's gonna say that the Navajo Nation EPA is gonna say, we are gonna address abandoned mine waste in this manner. And then it's gonna become policy. And then it's also gonna say somewhere in there, it's gonna say, we're gonna clean up to these standards. So all these, all these, all these are regulations. So you have the law, but it does not have any regulations that whoever is on the outside or on Navajo can follow. Akoh, so you have a law, but it doesn't have a, it does not have a teeth. It doesn't have a way to move forward. Akoh, anhih napeho. With inside Navajo Nation and with the, the leadership. We need to fully develop and enact the circler process, the circler policy. We have to have regulations that's gonna be attached to that law so that we can go out and do work. Eh, ah den nihihi has three da nihihi shna. Away. Nihihi di gahna hallo. That's what the Navajo Nation Circler has to go through. You have to get that child to stand up, make it walk. After it learns how to walk, you can allow it to run. Same process. We gotta get this Navajo Nation EPA to stand up, to have the capacity and to be able to follow policies that they're gonna develop and that you're gonna approve and the Navajo Nation's gonna, the Navajo Nation President's gonna sign. After that, we can hit the ground running. We can go to work. That way, the money, when it comes in, the Navajo Nation can choose what to do with those funds and how and where and when to implement all the funds that are coming into Navajo Nation. Eh de ya, hot ah benhihni doh. Benhihi shanana street odesh. Donana, Honorable Begay, I hope this is, uh, answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Daisy. Honorable Begay, do you have a follow up question?
Uh, chairman, let me allow other, other committee members, uh, to make a statement as, or comment or ask question, but, um, maybe at the end. Go ahead and, uh, give, give the floor back to me, chairman, appreciate it.
Akoshina shanand, uh, honorable members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions?
Chairman Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, go ahead.
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Honorable Freeland, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, chairman. Honoshnata, uh, good afternoon, my, my, my staff. Um, Mr. Daisy and the team, thank you for the update. Just a comment, um, I, I appreciate the visit that we made to Monument Valley and definitely support all the efforts of cleanup over there and learned a lot, took a, took a lot out of that trip and that visit. And wanted to ask, when can we start thinking about visiting Eastern? And especially the Churchill area, um, Mariano Lake, Casamara Lake and, uh, Haystack area. Uh, at some point, maybe an RDC visit, uh, head that way as well. So just a comment and ask, uh, chairman, thank you.
Akoshila, what we can do is, um, have, uh, Mr. Tahi and Mr. Yaazi uh, coordinate that, uh, Eastern Chigo. Ah do khaegi da. Asati, I know there's a lot in your area, Honorable Freeland. So I think I should hot ah schedule ilnaka. Um, Mr. Tahi, could you work on that, sir?
The chair members of RDS, RDC, yes, I will work on that with Mr. Yaazi on the coordination of this next site tour. Back to you, chairman.
Quick comment.
Okay.
Comment from Melvin. So one of the big things on Eastern Agency is there's numerous land jurisdictions out there. One of my comments that we focused on are we're only allowed to do tribal trust lands. But part of the coordination for Eastern Agency is gonna have to be with Navajo and US EPA. The contact person would be Dario Yaazi out of Navajo EPA, then probably Mark Ripperda out of US EPA. But Navajo AML would be available for the tour also.
Akoshina, Mr. Yaazi, and also, um, from Navajo Nation EPA Office, Mr. Dario Yaazi. Are you good to schedule this into your calendar to come in with us at Eastern?
Good afternoon, shanat ani, ah do members of RDC. Uh, yes, we would be able to do that.
Uh, Mr. Yaazi, we could barely hear you.
Good afternoon, can you hear me now, sir?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yes, we would be able to support that.
Akoshila, uh, Mr. Dario Yaazi, and we certainly did appreciate you, um, coming out to old J Two Monument Valley area to tour that area with Honorable Daniels and our people that are affected by those, uh, uranium and the abandoned mines. So here Mr. Yaazi, as well as Mr. Melvin Yaazi and Gilbert Daisy. I here hot ah, ah de ta di khaton anhino tan, I here hetna. So thank you. Um, honorable members of RDC, do you have any other comments or questions? If not, let me go back to Honorable Begay.
Uh, chairman, here nan dole. Uh. Di kodo ban yel ti ki, uh. I, I gotta leave that up to your, your leadership, uh, shanand ah nohli nihi. Um, maybe, again, a recommendation, and I'm not sure how effective it will be, but a comprehensive. Uh, a lot of these programs, expansion da initiki, uh, to some extent may duplicating some services in a way. Ah do beso la toh dan dahitet ah. And I, I did read through, uh, I forgot to make a copy of that. I've, I've seen, uh, I think, uh, from the federal government, kodo Navajo Nation yal, uh, I believe was three million. Uh, kodo regarding the uranium, uh, bcha'huil ya bakhatne or one million dahsha'ah eh. Akoko eh lahit ah aj beso la nihihi ho dahlneh ki khato dika in dahaz ti ki lahit ah aj go beso. Ba bka'tah lahtoh. So that's another area that I believe, uh, we need to be aware of because I'm, I'm not sure if these, uh, fundings were applied for or that some of these, uh, were an automatic, uh, allocation through some of these, uh, grants that are being, uh, allocated to the Navajo Nation, chairman.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Begay. Uh, Mr. Yaazi. Daisy.
Especially onani. So part of the bipartisan infrastructure law, it gives allocation to different purposes. So for, for the AML reclamation, states and tribes, there's thirty-two states and tribes that are eligible for money. And that is more focused on abandoned coal mines. There's also funds that were allocated to the Superfund Program and that might be where some of the funding is coming from. So in order to really answer, we need more background on which part of the if bipartisan infrastructure it's referencing.
Thank you, Mr. Yaazi. Honorable Begay, do you have a follow up question?
Um, uh, chairman, I, I, I should have, uh, not brought that up, but let me go ahead and look for that, uh, statement and then I'll share it with the, uh, committee, uh, referencing the funding, uh, allocated for the Navajo Nation. So let me, uh, backtrack on that and then, uh, forward the information, chairman, thank you.
Akoshila, thank you, Satila. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions? I hear none, we'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Excuse me, um, shanat ani.
Um, Mr. Daisy, go ahead.
Yes, let me make a small comment that you can all think about.
Okay, go ahead.
Di de. We did do, uh, mine site visit to those mine sites in, um, Monument Valley area, Skyline, Moonlight and, uh, Mon Two. Now, there has been extensive amount of reclamation that was done at those sites. Ah do na na, so when we talk about abandoned uranium mines, now that you've seen some, that, that's what you guys kind of think about. Now. Two weeks after we did that tour, we went and made a mine site visit report, a mine, mine site visit with, um, US EPA and, um, Department of Energy Legacy Management, defense related uranium mines in Colorado area, Slick Rock, Colorado. We went to these mine sites there that had minimal amount of reclamation done. Just enough to where a person visiting the site would not endanger themselves, but they still had dangerous physical mine features. Akoh. It's, it's like night and day comparison. What we see, what we call abandoned uranium mine on Navajo is significantly different than what is off the Navajo Nation where there has been minimal amount of funding and minimal amount of reclamation by their AML programs. Simply because they do not have the funding. Akoh, Slick Rock, oh liang sikhae. It's off Navajo Nation, it's in Colora- Colorado. Ah de eh, shen daske degi toh na na. They't so bakhatna jagi. Ash coh, it's all exposed to humans and environment. Akoh hot ah da nel i, i noh sino. We can, Navajo AML through our cooperative agreement with DOE, both through the UMTRA program and the, uh, drum program. We can give you a tour of what real abandoned uranium mine looks like that has very minimal amount of reclamation done to it. Ah do na na bekai, eh be kedo, we looked at their drum sites in Colorado. We came back onto Navajo and we looked at two mine sites in Red Mesa and, um, Sweetwater and Isaspas area. And it was just like, we went to Moonlight, the reclamation was complete. We took the people out there, they looked at the site and they said, where's the mine? And of course, it's been reclaimed, there's nothing to see. But it is a drum site that they're gonna further document, verify and, uh, make sure that it, there was a mine there and document it. Ah do shen, US EPA, Navajo EPA will complete the remediation process. When we were there, we also showed the drums program what they could do to enhance some of the reclamation that's already been done. So the second site that we saw had erosion issues and we encouraged both US EPA and DOE on what, what the possibilities are to enhance the reclamation that's currently existing there. And then we even further, later on, we took them to another site where we did, Navajo Man of Mine Lands did what we call, um, environmental monitoring, where we're looking at how the mine waste, the waste, um, transport could possibly happen or how it could be contained. Anon and nihi throw both through air, soils, groundwater and surface water. Eh do, we showed them a project where we're doing an environmental monitoring site. So those are things that, um, the council or the, this committee has not seen yet that we encourage you guys to see so you guys understand what a enhanced reclamation site looks like and what near full remediation looks like on Navajo compared to off Navajo where there is no reclamation and no remediation. And they're just now going out there to do site verification and validation. Ako de, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daisy, for sharing that information with us. Ashin ah ni kodo ban sih khesa lehla do. Kodo de noh sinashigi. You're, you're always there to help us as oversight to help us understand the differences and in locations. Akoh here kodo, ashin ne ban sadeh khesa lehla. Honorable members of RDC, are you ready to accept the report? Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? Honorable Begay.
Chair, chairman. Honorable Green.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Begay.
Uh, Chairman Calvert, Green, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green, chairman.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair now voting motion carries. Here, uh, Mr. Yaazi as well as Mr. Daisy. Nasna, report on the Cutter Lateral Completion and Transfer Ceremony held on Thursday, June ninth, twenty twenty-two, and the water will service to the Navajo Nation presenter, Dr. Crystal Tulley Cordova, Mr. Robert Kirk, as well as Mr. David Schultz. Dr. Tulley Cordova, you have twenty minutes.
Thank you, Chair Nez, as well as honorable members of RDC and those, uh, in the audience. Today, I'll, I'll be starting the presentation, I'll, I'll then pass it to Robert and then to Mr. Schultz with INTUA. Uh, but the purpose of the commemoration was the Navajo Gallup Water Supply Cutter Lateral Commemoration, Operation Maintenance and Replacement Transfer, or OMNR. Uh, and it was a ceremony at the Cutter Lateral Water Treatment Plant near Zanalo Dhilli, New Mexico on June night. And the purpose of the event was celebrating the water deliveries to eight Navajo chapters, including Torion, Ojo Encino, Counselor, Pueblo Pentaro, White Horse Lake, Naiisi, Hu'erfano and East Toshakat, as well as, uh, the southwestern portion of the Hickory Apache Nation. In attendance were officials from Bureau of Reclamation, the Navajo Nation, both executive and legislative branches, as well as Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. as well as Navajo Tribal Utility Authority, and leadership from the Hickory Apache Nation, as well as members from the state of New Mexico and from the legislation, from a legislative leader, as well as from the Office of the State Engineer. Mr. Kirk will go into more detail with regards to the presentation of the agenda. So with regards to the effort, it was not only a commemoration of the Cutter Lateral, given that Cutter Lateral did complete in October 2020 and has been going. But due to the closure and due to the pandemic, we didn't have the opportunity to commemorate the event. But then also, it was an operation and maintenance transfer to the Navajo Nation and NTA. The last thing that I will say is that Assistant Secretary for Water and Science, Tanya Trujillo, was there. And so the Assistant Secretary for Water and Science oversees Bureau of Reclamation. So she was the keynote. And there she had described the FY 2022 funding for the Navajo Gallup Water Supply Project. And for those who may be unaware, the Navajo Gallup Water Supply Project is the cornerstone of the Navajo Nation Water Rights Settlement in the Rio, sorry, in the San Juan River Basin in New Mexico and was authorized for construction by the Omnibus Public Land Management Act of 2009. Construction began in 2012 and is scheduled to be completed by 2029. President Biden's Bipartisan Infrastructure Law included a total of 2.5 billion to implement the Indian Water Rights Settlement Completion Fund. And within that, 123 million included for fiscal year 2022 was for design and construction of the Navajo Gallup Water Supply Project. So I wanted to end there and pass the rest of the presentation over to Mr. Kirk and Mr. Schultz. And they can be available for questions. I will be on the Navajo Nation Water Rights Commission call. Thank you for the opportunity to present today, honorable members of RDC.
Thank you, Dr. Thule Cordova. Mr. Robert Kirk, you have the floor. Mr. Kirk?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Kirk, we can hear you.
Mr. Chair, the honorable members of the RDC, Dr. Crystal Thule Cordova. The state of New Mexico. Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez. Office of the President, Mr. Leonard Sophie. The Cutter Lateral Water Treatment Plant, the Cutter Lateral Facilities, Bureau of Reclamation. In the Cutter Reservoir. Water Treatment Plant. October of 2020. Water Treatment Plant. We do have NTA. We also have Ryan Gladden from the Bureau of Reclamation on the line if need be for questions. And the Cutter Lateral Water Treatment Plant. Cutter Lateral Chapters. We kind of also wanted to recognize some of the key people that played a huge role. October of 2018. Cutter Lateral Chapters. San Juan River Water Rights Settlement was signed, yes, but before it was authorized. 2006. The seven chapters. It's called the Eastern Navajo Water Project. Navajo Nation. Financial Assistance. Don't make a D C. Yeah, he's a N Z. The state of New Mexico. The state engineer. I don't know that the city of Gallup. Mayor. A lot of thanks to Delegate Freeland. Delegate Sod, Delegate Raymond Smith Jr. Just for information. Jacobs Engineering. Jacobs Engineering. Cutter Water Treatment Plant. Design Bill. For the past two years. Contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. Mr. Dave Schultz. Dave, I was just, can you kind of talk about what this contract means and how NTA has plans for working out into the future and how it's going to serve the Cutter Lateral Chapters? So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Nez. Good afternoon, honorable members of the committee and all those in attendance. As Mr. Kirk stated, we have retained Jacobs to continue operation, maintenance, and replacement activities for the Cutter Lateral. And this is the water treatment plant and the, all the upstream facilities up to, but not including the reservoir, of course. And prior to retaining them, we advertised for a Level Four operators, several Level Three operators to do direct operations, maintenance, and replacement. We started this effort a little bit over a year ago. And we've experienced the same as what we have experienced earlier and many other enterprises in the nation and doing business on the Navajo Nation. Very difficult to find certified water treatment operators. And we set a deadline for ourselves to allow time, if we could not do direct hire, to advertise a request for proposals. And we started that effort last fall, advertised for a period of time, and we had some responses. And we vetted those responses. And the best turned out to be Jacobs. So we just signed a contract with them in time to resume operations from reclamation. It's been a smooth transfer so far. The Cutter Lateral is part of the Global Water Plan. And I've got a map that has been handed out to the RDC. And I'll share my screen and bring that map up so all can see it who are on the Zoom meeting. What we're looking at here is the Global Water Plan. And we've been talking about the Cutter Lateral, which is the far eastern area here. This red line is the Cutter Lateral and the water treatment plant being here and the upstream facilities being here. And that is under contract with Jacobs. Downstream, we are operating that with our existing operators. And these blue lines are the NTA existing facilities. And all these distribution lines, including White Horse Lake, are connected to the Cutter Lateral. Part of the Global Water Plan also is the Navajo Nation Municipal Pipeline, which is this east-west running line that is nearly complete and construction. There's a few deficiencies that reclamation is taking care of. Another part of the global, or this east-west running line, will be bringing water from Farmington out to these distribution systems in New Mexico. We negotiated a water treatment and conveyance contract with Farmington some time ago, and that will allow us to convey that water from them. It's Navajo water that they are taking from the San Juan, treating it, and then pumping it into our water or into this New Mexico municipal pipeline. The Navajo Gallup Water Supply Project also includes this north-south red running line and then these laterals out to the east and west towards Window Rock up to the New Mexico state line and then out to Crown Point. And then also east-west into Red Springs, Chichiltah, Vanderwagen, and further south into all these communities with the target being all these water distribution lines in the San Juan Basin, in the San Rio Jose Basin. That is, that's a different negotiation. Also, part of the Global Water Plan that is in design and construction is over here on the western side. The Water Management Branch is developing some key infrastructure out here, namely the water treatment plant in the Lachi area. So this is the global, the Global Water Plan. And the Cutter, the Cutter Lateral is just a small part of that. Some of the challenges that we're facing, as I mentioned earlier, is staffing up with high-level certified operators and supervisors and management specialists. So those are, that's one challenge. Another challenge is developing a base, a customer base. Right now, the Cutter Lateral serves about 6,000 customers. And it is capable of serving 50,000 customers. And so we have a great deal of water and it's available for growth. And we would encourage that economic growth. There are lots of opportunities that this water brings. And so NTA encourages the commercial development on, anywhere, of course, on the nation, but particularly where we have water. And we have water here on the Cutter Lateral. So those are some of the challenges. One of the benefits we've recently come into play is that reclamation has put in place a full waiver of operation, maintenance, and replacement contracts. We just completed negotiating an OMNR transfer contract, as you've heard. That was recently signed last week, allowing us to take over the operation, maintenance, and replacement. So that concludes my part of the report, and I can turn it back over to the committee and stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second. Freeland? Thank you, Honorable Freeland, second by. Is there a second?
Chairman, I'm sure.
Honorable Daniels? Thank you.
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
Chairman?
Honorable Freeland, go ahead.
Chairman, thank you. Resource Development Committee members, as well as our staff and the staff of Dr. Thule Cordova and Mr. Kirk and all others that were a part of this celebration of our transferring of operation maintenance last week. I just want to say thank you. It was a very great event. And, you know, BOR, we definitely are appreciative of what they did or have done in building that treatment facility. You know, we're very fortunate that we do have our water rights. It goes back many, many years. many, many years and you know, Mr. Stanley Pollak is also a part of it. Um you know, it it's very, I I don't know, I don't know if Water Management Branch has a timeline or any history documented of how this all took place, uh whether it's Cutter Lateral side or Navajo Gallup Water Supply Project side. Um but if there's a timeline that you all have, if you can share that with the committee, uh that would be most appreciated. Um I ha- I'm looking forward to this operation and maintenance and and running of of the facility. Um but like was stated, we need to find certified water technicians and uh individuals that uh can test the water. Um we do have, I know the water is already being received in Erpano Naizi and we we even drank some of it and it was good to, you know, good, really good water, quality of water that would be consumed and you know, um some of my officials were there, um some of the, some of the committee members were there, but they're saying that the water quality is very good. So um definitely appreciate all this that happened, you know, the years in the making and where we are now and 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 what what the place. Um we are also thankful for Hip Korea as well, um the partnership or the uh relationship we have with Hip Korea. And you know, some of the lines go through their tribal land, I understand, but you know, we're thankful that they did allow that. Um to go down towards Torian, Ohun Zino. So uh thank you to all all those involved and thank you to great event. Um my colleagues that did represent Resource Development Committee members, uh Resource Development Committee there during that meeting, uh during that celebration. Um and just want to say thank you again uh to everyone. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Mr. Robert Kirk or Mr. Schultz, your response?
Yeah, another Deluge Freeland, I can't laugh, Ado Mr. Chair, Ado RDC members. Um by hele Ado Timeline, the Ninge, uh Deluge Freeland, uh we we can put something like that together on me, uh the even the San Juan River Settlement, uh Kina Eh Ya, in the Nishna, uh from the Department of Water Resources, Department of Justice, um on me, uh Mr. Stanley Pollak, though, Ado Eh Ya, Altsun Khaal Hihiin, and so I see Yegob Ajay, Baheh Ni Tsinak, Edon Kaniya, Baheh Ni, Baheh Ni Tsinak, Notil Tsang, It's not retiree, Noan Edo. Uh 2004, eh da, uh Navajo Nation Council, I believe it was the 20th Navajo Nation Council, eh the San Juan River Settlement, um um ye La Da Asli, Ado 2005, eh Da State of New Mexico, ye Lanada Asli, Be Ketni Kretanoi, Ado Washington, eh eh Datil, 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 Datil Ya, Ado Tsol Ya, Ado Eh Tchata Ra, in committee meetings, gone, that the she, that the, 2009, eh Dan, that the um President Obama, eh ye La Asli, Obi Jee, Katina, Ako Ado Eh Eh So Eh Bajadet, uh so called 2012, eh Dan, the Lishka, For the Navajo Gallup Water Supply Project. So it's been a long, it's been a long process and ah ne history is is a, is a quite long and it's quite arduous, um ah ne Oye, and he Kaya Che, La Hidi, Ado, De Kui De Shee Eh Ya, Da Ha Edi Zashin De, Eh Ishchi De, Kati, Uh Koi Ya, Hadad De Liado, Koi Yan Kednei, Toba Tadas. Uh we'll be glad to put that together uh for the um the RDC show. Um Ado Ah Ni, Vain Kaha's Kri. Um so maybe one of the things that we can do is kind of share some of the uh the pictures as well too with the committee and I can email that out to Mr. Tahimso. Uh eh eh, yes, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any other comments or questions? Then, Akosila, Shnandai will go ahead and accept the report. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote Green.
Thank you, Honorable Begay.
Uh Chairman Kellwood's Green, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart.
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed and chair not voting, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kirk, Mr. Schultz and Dr. Tulie Cordova. I can't hear. We're on D, Report from the Heritage and Historic Preservation Department on the Bears' Ears Intertribal Coalition, A Collaborative Land Management Plan for the Bears' Ears Monument and the Next Steps to Be Taken. Presenter will be Mr. Richard Begay. You have 20 minutes, Mr. Begay.
I apologize, uh sir, uh I thought I was ready with the microphone. Uh yeah, this is uh Richard Begay with the Heritage and Historic Preservation Department. Um I want to uh talk to you a little bit about um the Bears' Ears Cooperative Agreement. Um the um and I did send out some materials to Rodney to pass out to the committee, um and I believe he did as well and I sent out um some additional information this morning and I hope that you got that as well. Um to begin with, um I want to talk, it's, I want to talk a little bit about the um Bears' Ears National Monument, um just so that we all, we are all on the same page about that. Um the monument, of course, was established by Obama in 19, uh excuse me, in December 2016 and that established 1.35 million acres um as the Bears' Ears National Monument. And he did that under the Antiquities Act of 1906. In that monument, the purpose of the monument was to protect archaeological, geological and other natural resources, um but also called for joint management between uh the Forest Service and the BLM. As you know, the Forest Services on the the US Department of Agriculture and the BLM is under the Department of Interior. Um the advisory, and it also established an advisory committee um that would include state and local government representatives, tribes, recreational users, private landowners and so on. There is some private landholdings within the monument, uh current monument as well. Um it also established, more importantly for us, and established the Tribal Commission and the commission uh would consist of representatives from Navajo, Hopi, Zuni, Ute Mountain and Ute Tribe. Um so that's, um there are a number of tribes who had advocated for the establishment of that national monument and those five tribes were on the forefront of on working uh to establish that monument. There are other, of course, NGOs that worked um on that as well, such as Denebi, uh Utah Denebikia, Friends of Cedar Mesa and some other groups that worked along with tribes to establish that um uh monument. And I see that Mr. Davis Gelford is on the line. He worked alongside many others to get that a stab, uh monument established. Um as you know, um Trump uh later reduced that monument through proclamation, 9681 in December 2017. He reduced the monument about by 1.1 million acres and he only designated two uh units, the Bears' Ears Unit and the Indian Creek Unit. He did increase the, uh I believe it was Indian Creek Unit by a little over 1,100 acres. Um but um uh he did retain the commi- committee, uh commission, um but it was, took a very different membership. Um so um tribes, of course, objected to that and many of the tribes, the five coalition tribes, did a suit against the federal government at the time and I'm not privy to some of that information, so I'm not going to talk about the lawsuits that were brought up by the tribes. Um I do have Pauline Abeta with DOJ on on call, on the call as well and she can um respond if there are any questions on that, on that issue. Um and of course, in 20, last year, in October of 2021, Biden, President Biden, the current president, restored um the monuments um and added just a little bit more, by 1.36 million acres. Um so he reestablished the monument. It's also important to note that what the tribes wanted originally back in 2016 under Obama was 1.9 million acres. Uh the tribes didn't get that, um but currently the monument is 1.36 billion acres. It also reestablished that Tribal Commission uh that uh with official representatives from Navajo, Hopi, Zuni, Ute and the Ute Tribe. It also specified that the uh BLM and the uh uh the commission and the Forest Service would work with the state of Utah on a number of issues. I mean, there are some state lands within uh the Bears' Ears Monument. Under both the uh by Obama and Biden administration, it does call for a land management plan and the commission is to help provide some expertise on land management issues, uh input through their traditional use activities and so on. And that's the purpose of that commission. Um Biden, Trump did create a commission, but that was called the Shashja Commission and that would only would have applied to the um Shashja Unit. But under the current Biden reestablishment, the commission will work um on the full 1.35 billion acres and work with BLM and the Forest Service. And that's where um uh we will get involved uh with that land use management plan. It's a little complicated, um so let me talk a little bit about, um just real quickly about the Bears' Ears Intertribal Tri- Tribal Coalition. Again, these were five tribes and there were other tribes as well who advocated for the establishment of that monument. Um they uh formally organized as a intertribal coalition with representatives again from Navajo Ute, Hopi, uh Zuni and the Ute Tribe of Utah, Ute Mountain as well. Um and currently, right now, um President Nez has appointed Hank Stevens um from Navajo Mountain to be the official representative to the coalition and the commission and I'll talk about the commission later. Um and he's also, President Nez is also an alternate as a representative to that commission and the coalition. Um when the uh commission formed, coalition formed, they did create a cultural subcommittee and that cultural subcommittee would advise the coalition on issues relating to the archaeology of uh of the monument. They were also charged with creating a land use management plan for the coalition and uh later would be the commission. Um the uh it's uh tribe was then tasked, uh that uh, let me back up just a little bit. The coalition um uh did form, did hire staff, um and they went after and are supported by private donations. None of the coalition and the current commission does not receive funding from the tribes or even from the federal government. The coalition operates on private donations, mostly from corporate sponsors. Um and they do, since we're not an actual uh a formal um uh organization with uh that's organized as a, like a 501(c)(3), um they do have a fiscal sponsor who handles all their money and that fiscal sponsor is called Resource Legacy Fund, RDL, RLD, or I'm sorry, RLF. So to me, uh so they're the ones who actually handle the money on behalf of the coalition. Um in that effort to try to get um some money for tribes to work on establishing land use plans, the coalition was able to get about a little over $400,000 um and from private donations and that money uh was then split up between the five tribes. Uh we uh each got about $75,000. Um for the Navajo Nation, I uh we worked with through the president's office and decided that um the Navajo Nation would not accept that $75,000 because it would be subject to IDC and we would have to advertise and it would just take too much time and we didn't have time to advertise and select a company. So we elected to work with the coalition and their uh their fiscal sponsor, Resource Legacy Fund, and we selected a company out of Farmington, uh to net at the Cultural Resources Management and DCRMs, DCRM is an acronym for that. Now, DCRM is run by a Navajo woman um out of Farmington, Rita Martin. She has a team of people um who are both Navajo speakers and specialists, environmental and archaeological uh and historical uh uh special uh fields. Uh so she, we gave, uh we agreed to give her the contract, uh R- RFL and the coalition arranged the contract and they did the work um for the nation. Um I was very involved in the scope of work and the fieldwork activities. Um I did send out to Rodney this morning a copy of the Navajo Nation Land Use Report. Um so you should have a copy of that and hopefully that was distributed to you. Dear Sir, DCRM finished the Navajo Report in October of night 2021. Um as you look at that copy that was sent to you, El State, you know, uh it has draft on it yet. We um have not finalized the report. The only thing that we need that, that we're still working on are the maps and also um some of the Navajo spellings in the report. And that's taken a little longer uh than usual because of the work that DCRM is doing on other projects, including Chaco Canyon. So um but the report that you have is the text is finalized and again, we're only waiting for the um to clean up the maps and some of the Navajo spellings in the report. So um having said that, all of the four other tribes, Hopi Zuni, Ute Mountain and a Ute Tribe from Utah, produce their own report as well, land use reports. Now, what the coalition wanted to do was take those five reports and then synthesize them into one singular report and that's what's before you today. And that's a report um with a pre cover on it that is before you and that one is entitled "The Bears' Ears Intertribal Coalition, A Collaborative Land Management Plan for the Bears' Ears National Monument, Draft 4C." Um although it's draft 4C, it is the final report and they only left a draft 4C on the title page because that's how it was sent out to some of the other tribes, but that is the final report that we all agreed on. We've have worked on this uh singular report for the last two years or so. Um so that is the report that is behind you. What the coalition and um wants and the commission wants is tribal, the tribes to have, to accept this report uh through a resolution and that's why that this issue is before you now. Um I'd like to read to you a a letter from the Bears' Ears Commission, and I'll clarify the commission in a bit, to the Navajo, um the 24th Navajo Nation Council. Um it's a very short letter, um so please bear with me. Dear Members of the Resource Development Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council, Bears' Ears Commission presents a collaborative land management plan for the Bears' Ears National Monument. The purpose of the LMP is to synthesize tribal perspectives on the management of the Bears' Ears cultural landscape and for this living document to provide the vision and foundation for the co-management of the Bears' Ears National Monument. Summarized in this consensus-based report are the positions and approaches to land management of the five-member tribes, Hopi Tribe, Navajo Nation, Ute Mountain, Ute Tribe, Ute Indian Tribe and Pueblo of Zuni that advocated for the creation of the Bears' Ears National Monument culminating in President Obama's proclamation, 9558 in December 2016. Included in this plan are expressions of tribal connections to Bears' Ears, descriptions of the cultural landscape, tribal approaches to conservation and collaborative management and current knowledge gaps. The LMP is the product of the commission's land management task force and a subcommittee comprised of each tribe's historic preservation department and other traditional knowledge holders and cultural advisors who have been working to who have been working to develop a collaborative land management plan for the Bears Ears National Monument. And we present the final plan here for your consideration. And it is signed by Carl Bo-Kelly, Bo-Kelly, Bo-Kelly from, as the Lieutenant Governor from the Zuni Tribe, Malcolm Lehigh, the White Mesa Councilman, Christopher Tavi from the Umpam Pudra, Representative from the Bears Ears Commission, Hank Stevens, Navajo Nation Representative, and Craig Andrews, the Brax Chairman of the Hopi Nation. Again, I did send this to Rodney as well, and it should have been distributed to you, to you. Let me get back a little bit to the Navajo report. I want to make sure that you understand that DCRM worked with the local communities around Bears Ears to get information from local communities. They worked with, I think interviewed about 35 people, most of them around Aneth, Mexican Water, Ol' Jeto, Navajo Mountain, and Shanto chapters. They've invited, they've identified numerous sites. Also talked about some vague recommendations on land management activities. That's all summarized in that Navajo report that was given to the commission. Now, talk a little bit about the commission. The coalition in March of 20 of this year designated itself as the commission. And again, that commission was reestablished under the Biden proclamation. So the members of the coalition, the official members of the coalition are now the official members of the Bears Ears Commission. Again, those five representatives, including Hank Stevens, are now the, make up the body of that commission. And they will be accepting the resolution from the Navajo Nation. And also will work with the BLM and Forest Service to help co-manage that land. The idea of the land management plan that is before you, the collaborative land management plan is to present that to the federal agencies for use and making a larger federal land management plan. Again, we have worked with both the BLM and Forest Service so that we can work together to manage that land and make sure that Navajo and other tribes' concerns are part of that land management plan. So that's a little bit about the coalition collaborative land management plan. Although I do want to talk to you a little bit about the cooperative agreement that will be signed on Saturday. You might have heard about that. The, we will, President Nas will be signing an agreement with the tribes of BLM and the Forest Service. And that agreement is entitled, it's a long title. It's called the Intergovernmental Cooperative Agreement between the tribal nations whose representatives comprise the Bears Ears Commission, the Hopi Tribe, Navajo Nation, Ute Tribe, Ute Indian Tribe of the Utah and Ura Reservation, and the Pueblo of Zuni, and the United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management, and the United States Department of Agriculture, Forest Service, for the cooperative management of the federal lands and resources of the Bears Ears National Monument. So this land, collaborative land management plan that is before you will be as part of the cooperative agreement to manage those lands. So hopefully I have explained it clearly enough. And we are asking for your review and hopefully at a later date approve that land management plan. The commission would like to have the approval from the tribes in early July. Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to present this to you. And I will now return back over to you and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Begay. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second. Freeland? Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second by? Second?
Chairman, I say.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Any comments or questions, honorable members of RDC?
That's a trip.
Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. RDC members. Arindakwado, Navajo Nation, Historic Preservation, Ajitainish. Ikeha, Kodo, Masigekilang, Kilangafunzma, in regards to Bear Ears National Monument. Ajit, Arindakwado, Inner Tribal Coalition, Ajitahikahikwado. Akokokado, Nareida. Arindziragowibehaznala, Disnechewo Alkhogi. Akonareida. I've been raised in the area, Nareida Bear Ears Area. All my life I've been, Nareid, when it comes to, Nareid, wood gathering, that, that, I go, I go up there, Arindakwado, Hokons, they call my siblings. My brothers, Hokon, I call them Nareid. When you go to Monument Valley, you'll see Hokons. These are my brothers. They built those, those Hokon at these schools. Where they get logs, I Nareid Bear Ears Area. Nareid, Cedar Mesa, Kegalia, that's how I get my water. I yell at things, I go to the mountains, Kegalia, I go to the river. Arindanana, Nareid, which goes to Nareid. The other national monument, Nareid, West of Monticello, Utah. I go, Ajit, Lagoi, I don't know, I don't know. So, Yugo, I know what, I can add all the heat, Ajit. I know where all the, Nareid structures are, Nareid, the Ohu Gans. How about, I know, I know, I know. I'd say, I know, I'd say, I know. I know, I know. I can, I can, I can, I can. I can, I know. I know, I know. I know, I know. I know, I know.
The Aidaa, Aru Iakwizah, N'gai da New Mexico's Aja'i, Anadla Aja's Sima'asuna Dahalo'ko. Ko, Aya'ba da de'ti, Isin'asuna Aida'i gi'ltow, Arunana Haskene'ni, Hel'yo'ko doh, A'ee, A'ee Aja'seltow, Hasin'ltow'ye'ko it'hadatow'le'te' Aja'se, N'gai da, Be'da, N'gai olzit'ho, Inna'ski'wizah go'ondesaf, The South Side Haskene'ni Mesa Dahawaz'ye'ko, A'ja'se da o'yi Hanne'ba da ti'ti, N'gai da, The Moonlight Mine hada ti'kha'nyat, uh, colleagues, On the, on the West Side, that Mesa, right there, Na'akai Mesa, Haskene'ni Mesa. So, Hata'ei Be'da, Jek'ho, Arunana, uh, M'dahwan Zora, Da'awat'eha A'ee, J'eh'ee, A'ja'se, Ch'eh'da, J'eh'ta'ee, Ba'da Hanne'eltow, So, Hanne'egi'wo'yi A'ja'se'mti'ko. A'ja'se, Khallo', Arunana, N'gai'shastza, Nah'ho'waz' A'ja'se, A'ja'se doh ye'ko, Hasin'ltow'ye', Hanne'egi'ba da ti'ti'ko, Aru ye'ko, Iku'do A'ee, Hasin'ltow'demeni, Klu'nikin, Ni'ha'hanne', Ki' A'ja'si'ba da ti'ti'shastza. So, Hata'ed'i ku'do N'gai'da Khalita'ee Ba'ha'nyat'oleh, Arunana ti'ku'e, Da'mo'yi A'ja'se ko'balch'ho, Ah, Ki' A'een te'do'sel Hanme'da ti'te, Do'sel Pe'ha'ho'waz'on da ti'te. N'gai da olzit'ho, N'gai da, Arunana, N'gai da, En't, En't chapter da, A'ja'se da, Be'da Be'sh'ha, An'ndlu'niki da, Sida'ho'p'spe'ha'ha'ho'waz'on da'ho, A'ja'se, Hata'balch'ho, Ha'egi'da signing, N'gai da, The Ceremony, Na'ad'le'egi, So, Aida'i A'yesit' I'll'a'ka, Ileb'na'ha'ee Aru le'eh, Alph'ha'andan'ee, En'lamso'da ba'al'zast, Ke'se'ho, Uh, Godi'ee, E'gal'az'ed'i, Ishet'hot'arat'um sa'ak'ke'se'gi, Na'ana't'eku'do, Uh, God'sut'che'ha'ne'eh, Hata'ayat'ke'se'ku'do, Ado, Le'be't' I'll'a'ku'do, Sut'che'ha'el'egi, Ki' El'ndegi, Ko, Sido'ka'ri'as'et' I'll'a'od'ideh, Uh, Ko, N'gai'di ku'do, Ba'ha'nyat'oleh, Li'igi't'a'ku'do, So, An'idi, No'fi, Uh, Di ku'do A'ee, A'do'ne'eh'ko ku'do, Uh, Ko, Kad' N'gai da, Ad'ntz'ag'ago, Ad'ye'ko, Hasin'ltow'ko N'gai da, N'gai'shasta had'z'ag'ago kad'eh, Ad'N'gai Flat Screen TV da, O'yu yo'at'ah, Ki'w'odeh N'gai da, Th'ya'g'una, P'ink'ad'eh. Uh, Ko, Do'odo, Hata'ek'eh Ba'ha'hu'il'ya'na, Ha'ant'et', An'ee, National Monument, El'ya'shman'na'hu't'um sa'ad'um, N'gai'da, It's I'll'a'ed'oh'yu't, Aru kui'ri, Si'arat'le'iz'zen'ha'la'ach'nan'nsk'ink'ho. So, N'gai Flat Screen TV da, Da, La'na'dis'ta'arat'ensk'ink'ho, Hoda't'eh'ku'da A'ee, Do'ye'ko Ba'ha'ne'eh, So, Do'do'ya' Ba'ha'hu'il'ya'da, Uh, Hoda't'eh'ko, Kue'egi'oh'yesit' I'll'a'ko, We really need to educate our Navaho people ku'do N'gai da, Ni'ch'ede'oh'ku'di'gi, Ke'ha Ba'ha'nyat'oleh, Li'igi't'a, So, Arunana, With other tribes, I'll'a'ku'do, So, Si'ch'eh'na, Si'z'end'oh'ye', Eh'ch'el'na'An'Nesul'ke'egi, Il'la'ne'An'Yat'ha' Dahalo'ko ku'do, N'gai da, N'gai da, The U'Tmount, U-Trib, N'gai da, Troya, A'ja ke'hat', En'egi, Arunana, N'gai, White Mesa, A'ja ke'hat', En'egi da, U-Trib, Ko'n, S'gan'ago, I'ch'is'ndeh, N'as'ko, N'gai, Have a, A good relationship, Work, Working Relationship with Malcolm Lee Ha', A'ja, Arun'da ku'do, Manuel Hart, Arun'da ku'do da, Ileb'na'ha'ee, Ado, A'ye'ko A'ee, Hasin'ltow'ku'do, N'gai da, Inner Tribal Coalition, El'neh'ha'da, Ileb'na'ha'ee, Ado, Il'la'do A'ee, I'd'ilt'ow'dal'lamso'ku'do, N'gai da, Our neighboring tribe, right there, N'gai da, Na'as'us'an' A'ja ke'hat', En'egi, The San Juan Southern Paiute Tribe, Hoda't'eh'odeh A'ye'ko Ba'al'z'ak'ke, De'do ku'do, Ya'ku'da ke'da hat'ee'ko, Ku'do A'ee, I'd'ilt'ow'ku'do, N'gai da, The Hopi Tribe and the Zuni Tribe. So, Kue'egi'deh'oh'yesit' I'll'a'and'ba'ha'ey'da'at'eh, Uh, Hoda't'eh, But not was, Just the same, We really need to include the San Juan Southern Paiute Tribe, I'll'a'ku'do, So, A'ina'suna Dahalo', So, A'ja'ltow, Uh, Alph'ha'and'ha'ls'ch'eh'ku'do, So, Hoda't'eh'odeh, Ku'do Eh'ch'el'na'An'Nesuk'i,[267.22][267.86][S01, Eh'ch'el'ne'El'Nesodeh'big'ah ku'do, Ku'do Ne'Nes'eh'ho, So, Aida'i Olzit'ho Ba'ha'de, Si'ku'do Mes'Ch'eh'ku'do,[274.52][274.56][S01, Arunana ku'do N'gai da, Aru kui'ri, Si'arat'le'eh, Ba'ha'hat'oh't'Zeh'egi Dahalo'ko, Arunana, Ha'ri'kin'ha'eh,[281.02][281.06][S01, I'll'a'eltow'ku'do, Anyway, They have this gathering, The Bear's Ears Gathering. So, A'ed'ha, N'gai da, An'N'gai'shastza, B'ne'eh, Beg'iro'ha'th'khe'da, A'yun'we'eh'ko, Uh, Kue'egi'oh'ye' dahna'dahna'dahna'dahl'ke, Kue'egi Na'ad'leh, Na'ba'al'da, Na'da, Every year,[301.32][301.66][S01, J'eh'ee, But, To'na'ho', It's, It's gonna be in July, I'll'a'ku'do, So, Isin'arat'na'de, K'ego, Les'ek'ho,[307.82][308.06][S01, So, Aida'i A'Arunana ku'do N'gai da, Um, Mr. Chair, Da, Isiba'ha'ha'te'ne'ku'do, Lost by train, I thought, Ku'do,[317.62][317.96][S01, Uh, Ku'do, N'hu'ns'po'de'sh'ke'ku'do, Mr. Chair, Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels, For, For your concern, K'ro'shi, Uh, Mr. Richard Begay, Your response?
Mr. Chair, I, I wanna make it clear that I am not the official representative To the Coalition or the Commission, Representatives are Hank Stevens and also, Uh, the President Nez. Um, I work with the Cultural Subcommittee, Um, Along with Olson John, Uh, Who also works for HPD. We're the ones who, Uh, Works and advise, The Tribal Leaders, Uh, That Development Of the Land Use Management Plan, That is before you, Um, I understand his concerns. Uh, There have other people that we've worked with, Uh, In the, Out, Uh, Out in the, Um, Out in the public, Who have expressed the same concerns, About other tribes, Uh, Being involved In the Management of Bear's Ears, Um, But it is with respect, That, Uh, We Do Not Push That Issue. Uh, This is a Coalition made up of the Hopi, Zuni, U'Tmount and U'Trib, Um, And they do have some, Claims of ancestry there, Uh, Again, They also realize, Uh, The tribes also do realize, The tribal leaders realize, That there are other tribes who have interests In the Bear's Ears National Monument, Such as Hope Paiute, As, Uh, Mr. Daniels have said, There are other peublos, Such as Laguna or Akima, Um, There are, Could possibly even be, Um, Some Apache Interests in there, But the Coalition realizes that, And when they do make decisions, Or when they have discussions, They do keep in mind, The interests of other tribes, And they see themselves as, Representing those other tribes, Who are not part of the Coalition Or the Commission, Um, The proclamation that was issued by all three Presidents, Um, Obama, Uh, Trump and Biden, Mentioned the five tribes specifically, Hopi, Zuni, Navaho, Uh, U'T, Um, And U'T, Uh, Those tribes are specifically named in the proclamation, Um, And the Commission, Inner Tribal Coalition, Is made up of official representatives, That are designated by the tribe, And in this case, And it's the President who made those decisions, About official representation, To the Commission, And again, That's the President himself, And, Excuse me, And, Uh, Mr. Hank Stevens from Navaho Mountain, Um, So, I will leave it at that, But I wanna be sure that, Um, I understand his concerns about, Um, And again, We, Those sentiments were, Sentiments were given to us by other, Uh, Members of the public as well, Um, But I don't think it's appropriate For us to be, Get involved, And we were here first, Uh, They don't need to be there, It's not productive, And I would advise against it, Um, So, We need to work together, We work together to create this monument, All five tribes work very hard, With both people in Washington, Our local delegations, To make this monument happen, And I think it's important that we keep that in mind, As we move forward, Um, And, Uh, The Annual Summer, Bear's Ears Summer Gathering, That is hosted by Utah D'Ne'bek'eh, Is on July twenty-fourth. Um, It's usually a weekend, But I think it's only a one-day event this year, Because of COVID concerns, But that is scheduled for July twenty-fourth, Um, I did send to Rodney, To you just now, Um, A copy of the agenda, For Friday, Which is the Commission meeting, And also for the event, Uh, On Saturday, So you do have that agenda, If you wanna share that with the Committee, Um, I, Um, Please do so. Uh, That would be my response, Um, Mr. Chair, Thank you.
Uh, Thank you, Mr. Begay, And, We, We certainly do appreciate your report. And, K'ro, Sin'and'An'aid'ns, Kirig'ee, Honorable Daniels, Perhaps, Um, We, We can go up there, Wait, Ad'at'at', Just scheduled, On, N'ans'to'ans'eh, Um, Mr. Dan, Honorable Daniels, Well, What is your thoughts on that?
Um, Mr. Chair, Um, That will be, Uh, Don't, Don't, It wasn't, We don't agree that, For RDC school up there, N'gai'da, Their, Their National Monument, Uh, Uh, Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Uh, Mr. Chair, We could, Um, Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, This is Richard, If I may, I'm more than happy to work with the Committee, RDC, To arrange a visit up to Bear's Ears, Um, We can certainly get, Um, Both the, Um, UDB and also, Um, The Coalition, Or even Friends of Cedar Mesa involved, Um, And, Um, Arrange a tour, Um, And we'd be, We'd be happy to do that, And I can work on that with Rodney, Or whoever else I need to, But, I just wanna put that out there, That I'm happy to help arrange that.
Okay, Thank you, Mr. Begay, We probably should, As Honorable Daniels stated, En'th area, Is, Um, Honorable Charlene So's area as well, And I'm sure, She would like to Be a part of this, Um, Tour, So, Uh, Mr. Tai, Could you please keep that in mind, As well?
Chairmembers of RDC, Yes, I made note of that.
Thank you, Honorable Members of RDC, Any other comments or questions? I hear none, We'll go ahead and vote to accept the report, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, How do you vote?
Chairman, I vote Green.
Thank you, Honorable Begay.
Chairman, I vote Green, Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Freeland votes Green, According to his text message, Honorable Stewart?
Um, Green, Chairman.
Okay, Thank you, We have a vote of five in favor, Zero opposed, Chair not voting, Motion carries, Thank you, Mr. Begay, Appreciate the work you do at HHPD. Oh, Next, We're on D, E, I'm sorry. Navaho Division of Transportation, Report on Bird Springs, N-seven. Isin'K'ro, Ben'ch'el'hannet'oleh, The road construction, Presenter, Mr. Gilbert, Garrett Silversmith and Norma Bowman, You have twenty minutes. Mr. Silversmith?
Good afternoon, Members of RDC, Can you hear me?
Uh, Yes.
Good afternoon, Um, Members of the Resources and Development Committee, This is Norma Bowman, Deputy Division Director for Navaho Division of Transportation, On behalf of Mr. Silversmith, Um, Darrell Bradley, Our Principal Civil Engineer, Will be providing the update regarding N-seventy-one. Mr. Silversmith is in Flagstaff, Along with several of his colleagues and the President, At a meeting regarding the fires that are occurring out in that area, So I will turn it over to Mr. Bradley now.
Mr. Bradley?
Thank you, Chair, Oh, Thank you, Chair Nez, And members, Of the Resources and Development Committee. Uh, My name's Darrell Bradley, I'm the Principal Civil Engineer with the Navaho Division of Transportation. My main responsibilities are managing our Federal Highway Tribal Transportation Program, And, Uh, My report will be on the update, On the N-seventy-one, Print Three, Bird Springs Road Construction Project. Um, Just real briefly, The, Uh, The project is about seven miles, In length, Uh, Total new realignment, Gray drain, Placement of aggregate base course, Um, Asphalt pavement, Tattle Guards, Right-of-way fencing, And other miscellaneous construction. Also includes a new spur road over to the, Uh, Little Singer Community School. The project, Uh, The project was designed by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Navaho Region, And the, Uh, Navaho Division of Transportation, Uh, Staff are constructing this project, Along with various subcontractors, That are providing additional support for the project. The, Uh, Project currently, Uh, Is forty-three percent complete, And we, We are actively been working on a lot of the, Uh, Earthwork, Moving roadway, We call it roadway excavation, Building up embankments, Installing, Uh, Culverts, Including some very large diameter culverts, At selected locations, Which will allow, Uh, Animals to move from one side of the road to the other. The other is, Uh, You know, We've had a number of, Uh, Uh, A number of, Uh, Contractors supporting us on the project. You know, Quality control is very, Always important, So we have a, A company That provides a lot of density, Moisture tests on a lot of the work that we do, You know, Testing the concrete, And, And eventually the, The pavement, When we get to that stage. We've also been involved in coordinating a lot with Navaho Tribal Utility Authority, On relocating, Uh, A number of existing water lines, That are either crossing or running parallel to The new roadway, And so, Uh, We've also, Uh, Worked with them closely to get Steel encasement pipes under the road, Uh, Relocating their facilities, And making those connections, To keep, Uh, Water service, Uh, Going during construction. We've also had a number of, Uh, Contractors, Uh, Priority One Contractors, CB Emulsion's Been providing additional support to Navaho DOT, With, Uh, Manpower and Equipment. Has, Uh, Been a great, A great help to us, And also, We've, Uh, Most of our staff that's currently working out there, Been there since, Uh, Last, I believe it was August, September of twenty-twenty-one. So, We've made a lot of progress on the project, You know, The big job, Big job, Big earth-moving job, And We're about ninety percent complete with moving, Moving all that dirt, And, Uh, Getting everything, Uh, In place. Like I said earlier, Majority alignment is, Is along a new alignment, So, You know, That's required us to Move a lot of dirt, Uh, The other challenges have, Uh, I think with most road construction projects, Is, You know, Access to water. We've identified a number, Uh, One water well, Over near Loop, And so, We've been transporting water back and forth from, From that facility, Uh, You know, To meet the needs of the project. You know, I think many of you are aware of the drought conditions, And really, The high winds that we've had all spring, And That's really created a lot of challenges for our staff out there, Working, You know, Working on this roadway. But, Uh, You know, They were able to continuously work during, You know, That, You know, Those, Those high winds, And to the point to where, You know, We're getting, We're getting close to connecting The earthwork, The roadway portion with, Uh, N-fifteen, Just east of the, Uh, Current Chapter House. We've, Uh, Were scheduled, We procured a number of subcontractors to help us, You know, Uh, Once we get all the earthwork done, And we're ready to bring in, Uh, Aggregate Base Course For the project, We've executed a contract with CB Emulsions, And they'll deliver, Uh, Quite a few tons of, Of Aggregate Base for this project, And just to give you an idea of the cost, That contract was a little over a million dollars, To haul Aggregate Base for this project. And the other big project, Our big contract, Is we have asphalt, That was needed for the project, And Uh, We selected, Uh, NECA, Uh, NECA to provide that pavement for the project. Uh, That contract, For your information, Is about two-point-nine million, Just, You know, Just to put down the asphalt For the project, So that kinda gives you an idea of, You know, Just the cost, Associated with a heavy highway, Large construction project like this. Um, We, As I mentioned earlier, We had, Uh, I know, We've, We had a, Um, We had support from CB Emulsions, In providing manpower and equipment, But that contract, Uh, Is recently terminated. We've already, We've already exercised a twenty percent contract modification on that, So we can't, We can't go any further with that contract, So, That manpower and equipment contract is, Is completed with CB Emulsions. And so, Um, What we're gonna do over at Indot here, Is we're, Um, We're adding additional resources To cover what CB Emulsions was doing, With our current crews out there, So we're bringing in an additional Four heavy equipment operators, And three laborers, As well as equipment, You know, To continue on and finish out the earthwork. Our goal is to finish out this earthwork, You know, By the end of the summer, So that, Uh, You know, That positions ourselves To begin to haul Aggregate Base Course, And begin to place that, Uh, You know, Before we, We pave the whole entire route. Um, The other challenge that the project has, Has faced, Uh, During these times, Is just the, The amount of fuel, That we've consumed in our, In exhausting our fuel budgets, Because of the Diesel prices right now, You know, Just for your information, We're paying, We, We're paying about six dollars and forty cents A gallon, To, Um, You know, To fill up our, Our, Um, Equipment, And that is really, Um, Greatly exceeded a lot of our construction budgets, And, Right now, We were, We finally, Where we were finally able To secure a, A new, A new fuel contract with Navaho Oil and Gas, And they'll be providing about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of fuel, For this project, To help, And that should be Enough for us to finish out, A lot of the major earthmoving, That needs to be done, And then, We, You know, We turn it over To CB Emulsions, Uh, To deliver the Aggregate Base Course, And we'll, We'll handle, Uh, Uh, Placing that. So, You know, Those were two major concerns recently, That popped up, You know, The manpower and the fuel, But Navaho DOT's been able to work through that, And, You know, Our, Our additional resources will be out there On-site, Starting on Monday, June twentieth, And we'll be able, We'll, We'll be able to continue on with construction. Our goal is to get this project completed by October, October twenty-twenty-two, So if everything goes well, You know, We, We, Uh, We feel we can get this project wrapped up by then, But again, You know, In this environment, The challenge of rising prices On fuel and, And other materials, Has really wreaked havoc on a lot of our construction budgets, And, You know, We're always In co, You know, We're monitoring, You know, Those resources, Not only internally here at, Uh, Indot, But also with our contractors That are out there, Building, Uh, Several, Several of our routes, And, But, You know, We are committed on Getting these projects done, Even though, You know, Uh, We have these challenges, That have, Uh, That had, Has hit us because of the, You know, The crisis that is really global-wide, In terms of inflation, You know, Fuel, And, Uh, Materials and, And supply chain issues, You know, So, But with, With that, That, Uh, Completes my report On the N-seventy-one construction project, If you have any questions with regards to my report, Please feel free to ask, Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley, Honorable Members of RDC, Let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, Thank you, Second by?
Chairman, I second.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, Thank you, None, Uh, Any comments or questions at this time?
Chairman, Thomas Walker.
Um, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, You have the floor.
Yes, Uh, Thank you, Uh, Mr. Chairman, And, Um, Members of the, Uh, Resource Development Committee, Uh, Though the, Um, Istafta, Although listening to the audience as well, Meeting participants, The presenters from this morning up to this time, Although the, Uh, Presenters for this particular item On our agenda, Mr. Bradley, Although the, Uh, Indot's, Uh, Yeah, Although, Um, The, Um, Questions, Gi, Uh, Yes, There are questions, But it seems like, Uh, The answers are provided in the report. Iku'do, Uh, So, I, Um, Uh, I appreciate the, The report, Provided to the Committee, Um, Date, Uh, As you know, Uh, Bird Springs is one of my, Uh, Communities, One of the chapters that I represent, Uh, To the, Uh, Twenty-fourth Navaho Nation Council, Uh, Iku'do, And, This, Uh, N-seventy-one project is, Uh, Is, Is in progress, And, Uh, Every day, Uh, We see the work, Work in progress, Work being done on what would be the new, New N-seventy-one, N-seventy-one is, You know, Connecting two roads, One is N-fifteen, Uh, The road highway from Delcon, Loop, The N-fifteen. The other one is the, Uh, County Road from, Um, Winslow to Bird Springs, North, North Park Drive, On the, Uh, Navaho Nation Boundary Line, At Bird Springs, That's for N-seventy-one, Starts, And then it connects with N-fifteen, Uh, Going across the desert there, So that would be a major, Uh, Development, Major addition, Major improvement in transportation and roads in our community and in the region. So, It's a, A huge, Um, Endeavor certainly, And it's a long time in the making, Uh, Historically, There's thirty, Going back thirty-something years, Uh, Iku'do, I do speak to the, Um, Public and to leadership about this road, Uh, Every, Every now and then, When time's appropriate. I see, Hadeen na'ap'na'az, Bahhot'ato, Um, Ch'ban'hat'ago, Ko, W'anz'aten ta'ee, I see ta'in'nish, I see ta'in'nish'ko, Ch'ch'na'na, Ch'ch'ets'ah'kue'ak'na't'id'ot'net'eh'nish, Ah, K'ech'eh, Uh, Ko, Um, As, Uh, Elected leaders and as community members, Um, A, A, We keep an eye on our, Um, Local projects. Uh, This is infrastructure development, And, Uh, We also have a waterline project, A pipeline project from Loop on into Delcon, That goes through Bird Springs, So we have two major infrastructure development, Developments going on, At same time, Uh, The concern here, Today is mentioned earlier, The challenges That, That, Um, Mr. Bradley provided, They, The supply chain, Iku'ag'material and supplies For the, Uh, Projects, And we all know, We, We seen the news, You know, Everywhere, That there, There are challenges there, Anywhere and everywhere, Everywhere you go in this country, You will face, You know, Those kinds of issues, And no doubt here on Navaho, Uh, We have those, We face those challenges as well, Uh, But they tend to add costs to the projects, Although time, Though, Time and then other resources are expended, On, On some of these challenges. Uh, The mention was the, Uh, Fuel also, The cost of fuel being rising, Almost every, Every time you go to the gas pump, Uh, You know, Another cent, Two cents, Three cents, Uh, Is, Is added to fuel, Price of fuel, Uh, But dis'ing'eh'w'eh'ko. And, Uh, We just, Uh, Hope, That, Uh, The, The project is completed, Uh- And uh, we just uh hope that uh the, the project is completed um at the time that, you know, uh allowed or scheduled, on schedule. And that uh, the, the delays are few and the delays are minor. So uh, as you all know, as representatives of our community, we speak for our communities, our community members, our constituents. Receiving a report like this, then I then in turn go back to the local chapter or local communities and provide the update also. I know Mr. Bradley can't come down to Bird Springs to give a report, but uh some of us can. When, when the opportunities are there and, and so forth. Although, of course, the, the uh NDOT, though the contractors are there based um in the community and they also provide information to leadership, local leadership. And I had thought um, I wanted to, our leadership, uh, Navajo Nation Council, though RDC to receive this report today on record and give, give, you have an idea of what, what um, the uh status of the project. And if there's any challenges that are identified, it's incumbent on us as leaders also provide assistance. Guide, guidance to provide um, you know, uh, the, on the legislative side, support and help. If there's a need to do that. Project um, uh, that, that, that we're talking about here, that's, we're focused on here this afternoon. It provides jobs for our local community members and also in the region. Uh, jobs are scarce sometimes and, you know, this is, this is an excellent opportunity for community members to um earn wages so that they can support their families and their homes. Although in this, in this uh pandemic, that, that's important that people go back to work and stay at work. We look, look at the challenges that are mentioned. You know, any interruption of um the project and of course it, it has a domino effect on all kinds of things. Even, even lost wages. And as um leaders, we, we get, we get concerned about that. But although added costs, I know that we get concerned about that. Although costs overruns or running out of money, you know, because the budget uh was meant for, you know, certain amount of time. Then we get concerned. Oh, uh, certainly um, uh, committee members will and staff will keep you posted on, you know, the, when the time comes near when the project's being completed. Appreciate the time, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I like indicate some of the questions I had earlier, they were addressed or spoken to during Mr. Bradley's report. Well, he had Mr. Bradley and your staff for coming to RDC at our request. Because I know it's late, uh, last minute notice, but nonetheless, um, you were able to meet our request and that's appreciated. Uh, and I, as I explained, some of the uh concerns, gee, uh, that, that's, uh, I guess every leader uh has those concerns when there's a project in their community. There are concerns about different, different uh issues and challenges, but uh, so. Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. We should be very proud of our, our enterprise, NDOT, the work that they're doing. Our brother, Honorable Stuart loaned money to Honorable Raymond Smith and that bridge got done over there at Lupton. Oh, Amarillo, they're, they're, they're gonna fix that road there to the school, which is really gonna be good. And then N thirty-six Highway is gonna start work also. Somewhere on the Navajo Nation, something's getting improved by NDOT, so that is really good. And we're proud of NDOT. Northern Agency, always helping us too. Just wanna say that, thank you. NDOT staff, Mr. Bradley, your report certainly appreciated. Uh, Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions? If not, back to you, Mr. Bradley.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair Nez, and uh thank you, uh, Vice Chair Walker for those uh great comments. Uh, I agree, it's, it's challenging times for all of us and, you know, working with the Resources, Sources and Development Committee, uh, you know, to deliver these projects is gonna be very important during this time. And yeah, greatly appreciate our staff here at Navajo DOT and what we do from planning, design and construction. And also the community for, you know, the patience and understanding that they have in working with us. I know many of you would like your projects done as soon as possible, but you know, we try to keep the community informed as every step of the way as, as we deliver these projects. But, you know, greatly appreciate uh the uh opportunity uh to provide this report to the Resources and Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Um, thank you very much. My brother, Chair, although, I don't know, RDC members. Mr. Bradley, thank you for the update. Going home. North of um Flagstaff, we were going out of town. That road closed. So the only way to go, get back to Monuma Valley was to go through Loop. Tubus City and back to Monuma Valley. Road closed due to, to fire. That, that, that road, right from Tubus City to Araby to Loop, that road was busy. That, that, that town. Gas station was packed. I wish there was a shortcut. Their road. Go all the way around.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Daniels. Uh, back to you, uh, Mr. Bradley.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Chair Nez, and thank you, Honorable Daniels, uh, for, for those comments and uh yes, it's really unfortunate that, you know, we've had two, two fire events that have caused really disruption to traffic in the northern part of the state. I know that uh, you know, the partnership, the collaboration that we have with ADOT and other county DOTs, the BIA and, and even our Hopi, uh, Hopi tribal partners have all been, I guess, impacted by the detour of these, uh, the traffic. And uh, I think from, from a standpoint of uh, you know, looking at road conditions, the capacity to handle these kind of detours can be challenging on the local, local tribes and the local governments, but uh, I think we're all in this together. Many of our constituents utilize those roads to get to and from Flagstaff, so we do what we can, you know, to support the state and our other partners. And, you know, that's, that's why it's taken uh our Director Silver Smith to Flagstaff to see what kind of assistance uh the Navajo DOT can provide in this time of need. Uh, you know, from a planning standpoint, I think, uh, you know, we've, we were, you know, we've been looking at, you know, a route from the Loop area heading north towards Cameron. You know, obviously, it'll cost a lot of money to build that road. We're also uh been exploring possibilities of a coal mine to uh Loop or in, into is the route, Hopi Route Two is the route that runs from Loop to Kokotz movie. And, and so, you know, those are opportunities that we're looking at, but right now there are a lot of uh in the planning stages. And uh, you know, I know that, you know, I know that our deferent system that we're currently looking at costs, costs us quite a bit of funding and maintenance to try to maintain those roads and all the more challenging for us to construct and build new roads. But, you know, those are, you know, planning, planning level uh that we're looking at right now, but definitely, I think we all can kind of see a need. We're all looking for shortcuts, but uh, you know, appreciate the, the comment and, and uh, you know, we look forward to continuing to work with RDC on these types of that opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions? Hey, are we ready to accept the report? Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay votes green according to his text message. Honorable Daniels? Thank you. Honorable Freeland votes green according to his. Honorable Stewart? Green. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries number eight. Close of meeting. Any other announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Chairman, I have announcement.
Uh, who has an announcement?
Me.
Okay, pro temp speaker, go ahead.
Okay. College finals update for collegiate rodeo. We have six contestants out there on, from Navajo. We have Hiyo Yazi, who's sitting seventeenth place with a twenty-two point one on two head. Rooster and Disturiously with no times on both. That was due to bad draws. Then we have Matthew Tuni in Bareback sitting fourth with a hundred and ninety-six points. And then Brad Marino with sixty-five point five points in Bull Riding. And then Brad Marino and Jake and Thore Chidi are third place in, in the team roping with a total time of thirty-eight point three on three. And then our female lady bell racer is sitting third with a total time of forty-three point four. So they're still under third round. This weekend they're going to their final round. This is all in Casper, Wyoming. So that's our updates for our college students who are out there representing the colleges and universities they attend. So very proud that they're doing pretty good, sitting in the top twenty across those, of those events that they represent and in Navajo Nation. So keep them in your prayers, hope that they have, can continue to have good draws and the equipment is working properly for them, barriers are working good for them. So that's it, Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, Honorable Stewart, you're supposed to say yee-haw. Thank you very much, Honorable Stewart, for that uh update from our Navajo Cowboys, Girls. It sound like they're doing well and as Honorable Stewart said, let's keep them in our prayers. They're doing a good job representing the great Navajo Nation as young people. Motion to adjourn? Motion. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, thank you. A second by?
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay votes green according to his text message. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart? Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries. It's three thirty-eight PM and we are officially adjourned. Be safe out there and have a good week and we'll see you when we see you. God bless each and every one of you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chair Committee. Thank you. Staff, thank you.